Thank you, good evening. I'd like to call the October 5th, 2017 Middletown Board of Education meeting to order. Would you please lead us, Mr. Gomez, in the flag salute? And if you could remain standing for some moments of silence?
Please join us as we pledge allegiance to our flag.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. The first moment of silence this evening is for Mr. Angelo Monaco. And Angelo's wife taught ESL bilingual in the district for years. Angelo, while not a employee of the district per se, he worked for the district as an independent contractor. He preceded our tech department, and he was a great help to Bill Wilcox and myself when we were setting up the television studios. Now, the first television studio was not where it is now. It was in the Middletown High School. And then, Mr. De Lugatz asked that be set up at the board meeting. We knew the basis, basics, but we really didn't know the fine points of setting up a studio because it hadn't been done, and we were probably, we were definitely the only ones in the county doing that, and perhaps one of the few in the state doing that. So Ange was always there to help us. He was there not only for the video aspects, but for the sound. He helped us with problems when we had in the auditoriums. He helped us in the individual buildings. Very pleasant to work with, very, very congenial. The next moment of silence is for Vera E. Goodrich. And Mrs. Goodrich, the mother of Erica Reed, who is a very valued employee at our Carter Elementary School. And the Reed family has a long history in the district, instructors, counselors at present, and security. Mrs. Goodrich, at the time of her passing, was vice president of the Goodrich Construction Company. And that company has an excellent reputation for the very, very fine work that they do in various building projects. She did community work as a member of the Elks Lodge, and at the time of her passing, was a, was an officer in the Denton Hill Presbyterian Church. She was a deacon, as a matter of fact, also known in the community as an avid gardener. Both these people will be missed. Please remember them in your thoughts and prayers. And additionally, remember those people who lost their lives and were wounded in that horrific Las Vegas incident. And finally, the, all the people in Puerto Rico who have experienced the devastation of the hurricane. Thank you so much. Mr. Pierre, will you please read the mission statement of the enlarged city school district?
Sure, Mr. President. We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population, who will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Mr. Pierre. Mrs. Clark, could you call the roll, please?
Here.
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 Thank you so much. Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Approval of the regular minutes of the September 19, 2017 meeting?
So moved.
Did you get that, Mrs. Clark? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we come to our recognitions and announcements. And very special recognition this evening, we have two members of the Orange County Sheriff's Department with us. And we had spoken briefly in moments of silence about Puerto Rican relief. And the Sheriff's Department is coordinating the relief effort for our area, and we plan to, the district plans to be involved in that. Would you like to go up to the mic and introduce yourselves and tell us how we can be of help?
As we all know, Puerto Rico has suffered through a devastating hurricane, we must highlight our recent sacrifices. We at the Orange County Sheriff's Office are glad to do our part in coordinating the selection for Puerto Rico. So basically, we're here on the mic and so proud to show our boys, and we represent them here tonight, and we'd like to inform you some of the things that we are doing.
As we all know, Puerto Rico has suffered through a devastating hurricane, we must highlight our recent sacrifices. We at the Orange County Sheriff's Office are glad to do our part in coordinating the selection for Puerto Rico. So far, we have collected plenty of water, crazy libraries, under lights, soaps, and toothpaste, shampoo, and bathtubs, and those so far. We have drop boxes in the lobby of the Sheriff's Office for donations. Donations are collected seven days a week, between July 7th and November 11th. We also have an anonymous donor who donated over a thousand dollars worth of products from Costco and arranged for shipping to the community. All right, we would like to thank you for providing us with the opportunity to come before you and talk about the Orange County Sheriff's Office and our endeavors to assist with replenishing much needed supplies in Puerto Rico. We embarked on a donation drive at several locations and were overwhelmed with the generosity of the community, and we would like to continue with that.
Basically, we have provided supplies throughout town, and we have another Sheriff's Office that we have, we have a post with you. We are going to have these set up on your website as well, and we have the Sheriff's Office as well. So if you need more information or contact information, as far as any other items that you would like to donate, we do have two more contacts on the bottom here that will be able to assist you further. So at this time, we have many, many drop boxes in many clerk's offices throughout Corvus County, Sullivan County, and Liberty, you know, the list goes on and on. So I think at this point, we'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to present this.
Sergeant, you mentioned that we could have a box set up in our Board of Education office?
Yes.
Yes, that would be no problem. We'll have that to you tomorrow.
Do you have special boxes with your logo on them?
Well, we'll bring these, the boxes, we'll put these posters on them as well.
Great.
Okay, and whenever they get full, you can make your contact, the Sheriff's Office or the contact numbers here, we'll get them, and then, you know, you can keep on replenishing.
And the deadline is October 13th? Is that a hard and fast deadline on that?
The deadline, yes.
Okay, so we got some work to do before that.
Mr. President, if I have a question.
You know, the, as soon as I know I'm gonna go around. The Sheriff's Department has always been a great help to this district. I remember Sheriff DeBois, when he was on the Middletown Police Department, he used to come and speak to our students on a regular basis. So we've worked with you before, and hopefully, this is going to be a success. Now, I'll go around with the table, and we'll start with Mr. Pierre, who's retired NYPD. Go ahead, Lou.
I just want to say, I...
Your mic on, Louis?
Excuse me?
It was.
Was on?
The mic was...
He talked stuff.
Okay.
Congratulations on the work you're doing, and we'd love to, I appreciate the help as much as I can.
And we do have, you know, bilingual deputies and officers, you know, in case there's a language barrier and people want assistance, we can do that as well.
And you guys work very hard on your jobs out previous, on law enforcement, so, and you're doing this on the side is, is great help, yeah. Continue.
Thank you very much, and I'm glad there is going to be a box locally in the district, but there's also, um, Towne Walk Hill, I see, right? So there are a couple other places, okay?
There's a few other places, yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, President Salina and my colleagues at the board congratulate Sheriff DeBois and all the wonderful deputies that work there for the work needed to keep our communities safe, and this great endeavor to help our fellow citizens and families in the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico. My question to Mr. President, is the boxes can be centrally located at the BOE offices, or will there be one, or could there be one at the school sites?
It certainly could be, and that would be up to the administration, the superintendent.
Yeah, I don't see any issues with that, and given the timeframe that you're looking at, if you can get us those flyers, we can distribute those out to the families as well.
Okay.
And I guess the idea of having one located in each of the school buildings would work out well for us, too, understanding that we need to get it done by the 13th.
Yeah, I think that would be great, it'll make it easier for parents and the children pursuing the elementary schools to bring their bags of contributions, take part in the endeavor.
And, you know, our buildings are doing things like this already, so this is, this is great, so this will sort of pull everything together.
Yep.
Rose?
Not a problem. Well, I was just gonna say, I think downstairs, right by the cafeteria downstairs in this building, there is, there is a box, so this will just be, you know, more of a message to get back.
Okay, yeah. Like I said, we can, we have plenty of copies of the flyers, and we can make more posters, you know.
I think this is, I think this is time, I know we're on a...
A time point.
A tight time schedule. I understand, and as they were just saying, some of our, some of our schools are already working to our programs. And I think one of the, one of the biggest fear of most of the people that I encounter is making sure that their donation goes to a reputable organization that's going to make sure that it gets to where it has to go. And I don't think that there's any better organization than the, than the Sheriff's Department. Puerto Rico, Puerto Rico is a part of the diocese that I oversee, the Eastern Caribbean Council of Nations, which is Puerto Rico and the whole line of islands all the way down. So I'm, we're also in the process of trying to deal with Puerto Rico, but Dominica and, and St. Martin, Barbuda, those are all my direct, direct islands. And so I think that this is great, there are students, the students are working real hard, and I think that this would be great to partner with and to send it. So I know there are other locations and other places and other people that are doing things, but I think this is great for us to push along this direction. Wherever they go, as long as it gets to the people that are in need is what's most important. And again, to, to, to kind of reinforce what you already said, because some people also, sometimes don't understand what it is that they need, that they're gonna donate, people just bring, you know...
Right.
I've, being in the Eastern Caribbean and having dealt with, dealt with storms and stuff like that already, it doesn't make any sense for someone to come with a winter coat, you know? You know, here's, here's some scarves and hats, you know, but we, you know, it's the Eastern Caribbean, it's the Caribbean. So, you know, non-perishables, diapers, like you said, baby wipes, toiletries, things of that nature, you know, and bug spray, thank you, especially bug spray, especially bug spray. So, thank you.
Maybe even put it on the TV, John.
Kevin's gonna take care of that.
Question, one last question, and you said, you said you're on Facebook?
Right.
Okay. Facebook, Facebook is, is, Facebook, Twitter, any social media is what I use to, to interact with people all over, all over the world. So I'll put that page and, and we'll boost it and get it out there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Zucks? Thank you. This is Blumenau.
I don't have anything except to say thank you for the organization of this important feat, really, to get the goods there. Is there any one thing, like you, if you could say to people, like, one, you know, one big one that is really needed?
Um, the water and the bug spray.
Water and the bug spray?
Yeah, that's what I would say.
Thank you.
You know, one other thing would be the, which is not on this list, would be like anti-diarrhea, like feo pectin, it's a lot of...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Grisanto.
The ground swell of this grassroots drive is gonna be incredibly important to fill those huge gaps right now that they have with the relief services. And, and your office has a tremendous amount of prestige, so I think this is gonna go a long way. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I wanna thank you for being here this evening, and we're gonna do our best, we're gonna give it the midi, the midi push, and hopefully, we'll be able to collect quite a few items, even though we have a short time. So thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you. We'll leave this on the phone.
Thank you. Onto personnel action items. No objection, can we consider AA instructional, A B non-instructional, and HC instructional?
John, are you gonna do 6B?
Well, I might. But we'll come back to that since I've done this.
No problem.
Okay.
What about number seven then, John?
Yeah, we'll take care of it, yeah. I want to get the personnel out of the way, though.
Number seven?
First.
She wants to get, he wants to get the personnel out of the way.
May I have a motion approved?
Second, sorry, I'll second it.
Discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we will go back to our board recognitions and announcement. Why don't we start, since Mrs. Tobiasin's so interested in this? We'll start with Mrs. Tobiasin. Go ahead, Rose.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perino. I just, a couple of comments. I attended the Monhegan Middle School open house last Tuesday evening. And I realize I've been retired seven years, but I have to tell you, I was absolutely blown away, sitting in a sixth grade class and changing every 10 minutes. The way the teachers, the expectations, let me put it that way, the expectations and the objectives that these teachers have for the students, the way the students are able to move on into each subject area. There was a couple of math questions that were thrown out, and I have to tell you, I had to hesitate on how to solve them, and I'm saying this is sixth grade math. So kudos for a really informative, well-organized evening. The other thing I'm gonna comment on, and I'm only, when you make a comment, I always hesitate that, you know, you're gonna offend somebody. So my only opportunity really for arrival and dismissal is here at Presidential. I have to comment on the parents. The parents are so courteous, dropping their children off, letting, you know, one person go, then the other person, even the bus drivers. The buses will hesitate and let somebody out so you don't have a, a long buildup. The dismissal procedure, signing in, going into the cafeteria with your card and, and exiting, again, I was highly impressed with the way it is organized. The children certainly know what to do, because I was gonna go out the wrong door, and I got told, no, we have to go out this door. But kudos to both buildings on, on what was accomplished last week that I was able to participate in.
I have nothing, Mr. Perino.
I know you attended some of the open houses and...
Actually, I was at the high school open house.
Was greatly appreciated there by members of the staff.
It was, it was very well run, as well, yeah.
Mrs. Knapp? Mr. Gomez, put the timer on, thank you.
I had the opportunity to attend both the Monhegan Middle School open house and the Presidential Park, and I can second the comments expressed by my colleagues. They were outstanding, and what I found most impressive was, one, the enthusiasm of the children, and as well as the enthusiasm of our teaching staff and personnel in getting forward with the new school year. And I think it's a great idea that we have these evening open houses. For one, it allows a lot of the parents who especially commute and, and are back in the evenings to take part in such an important school activity, and to have a sense of what their children are gonna expect, and, and their teachers' kind of action. I'm also very happy that with the use of technology for communication in Monhegan, and I know in the other schools now, through the portal, the, the parents could be in direct communication with the teachers. And I know as a parent, the teacher's always in communication with my kids with doing assignments, so I think that kind of open ways of communication really goes far in enriching our students' education. So I wanna commend all our teaching staff and all who participated in the, these activities.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez, and we'll go back now to the other end of the table. Mrs. Zucks, go ahead.
So, last night was the PTO meeting at the high school, and it was a great turnout. They are doing wonderful over there. They have been raising money, doing the football, and they're going with, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so they're also doing, selling trinkets and making sure that everybody knows about breast cancer awareness. And they're big push for the Harlem Wizards, and getting out there and making sure that they also went around and getting the parents and everyone to start raising money for the all-night grab party, which we have to make sure that as we're going through the school year and we're getting our kids prepared for college and everything, that we're also realizing there comes that end of the year, and we wanna make sure that they're safe. So we have to get this money up and get them prepared, so they're looking for any money, any volunteers, teachers, staff, let's get in there and make this happen.
And thank you for all the work you do with the, the PTO there, Keisha. You've done a great job as president, as an officer, and you're still involved, so thank you. Mrs. Blumenau.
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize the tremendous work that our administration put in at the high school for the tour that we had and dedication ceremony that we all attend, most of us attended this past week with Sean Patrick Maloney and, and some, and Aileen Gunther, who attended and really was so impressive, our state ed representatives, the chancellor of education, the commissioner of education, one of our regents was there, and it was just, you know, I, I always, I try to be objective when I walk into one of our schools, but walking into that high school, seeing the completed, the completed project is just so, I feel so much pride, you know, I really do. It's, it's incredible, it's beautiful, it's so functional, the kids seem so thrilled to be in the space, the teachers felt, you could tell, like they, they were just so proud to be in their moment, but also that you can, I know many of those teachers, and just to be a part of that space, it's very powerful. So thank you to Dr. Eastwood and all the, all of your administration who worked so hard to put the program together and the dedication, it just was a really great experience, really great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it was a great day. Keisha.
Let's not forget that this weekend is the bell game. That was my second thing, I forgot, so...
It's home, right?
No, as a way, we have to make sure that we go and support, the bell is home, and we have to keep the bell home, so...
There you go.
Go, go middies.
What time's the game start? Thanks.
Mr. C., go ahead.
Mr. Perino, when I attended the common council meeting, Tuesday, I think it was, I can't remember, and I spoke a little bit about the open house dedication of the new high school addition, and it was warmly received by the common council. And I can't, you know, I don't wanna repeat everything you said, but I have the same exact feelings. Just an example, we're upstairs and the biotech class was engaged, and whatever they were doing, they needed to do statistics, so the math class was there, and they also had an inclusion class, and there must have been 50 people standing outside the window, and everybody stayed on task, you know, looked over their shoulder, and then went right back to work. And the explanations of what was going on, some of it went over my head, that was, you know, way above my pay scale, it was really amazing what was going on. And it was very well attended by community members, dignitaries and what have you, and it was excellent, it was really well done. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Grisanto. Bishop Williams.
I'll, I'll start by just co-signing with, with Mrs. Blumenau and Mr. Grisanto about the, about Monday, and just say ditto on that. Job well done, job well done. I also had the privilege of attending, attending the open house at the high school, and open house at, at Carter. High school, high school was very well attended by many of the parents, especially a lot of the new incoming freshmen, freshman parents. Everything moved quite smoothly, even though there was a lot of information and a lot of things that were given, the opportunity to be able to see some of the, the new administration there in action was really wonderful. The only thing that some of the parents said that we, that we, we need to look at when we, when we do these open houses is maybe put up the maps, put up maps like you see in the mall, when you walk up to the wall and you can say, you are here. But it was, it was, it was absolutely, absolutely a wonderful job done by our high school staff, and, and as well at Carter, by the staff at Carter. Without question, I, I always say that Middletown is blessed to have such a phenomenal group of people and individuals, team members, and, you know, I know it's cliche, but they say teamwork makes the dream work, and so they absolutely work very well together, and it's really exciting to be able to be some kind of small part of that, and even more exciting to watch them in action. Mrs., Mrs. Zucks, she mentioned the, she mentioned the PTO, the Parents Club, and I'm, I'm a happy new member of the Parents Club now that I got a high school student. And so the Wizards game is on November the 7th, November the 7th, at 7:00 PM, that's a Tuesday night, where I'm doing a big promotion, a big push, we're doing a big push on it to try to make sure that we get as, as big a crowd as we can and come out and watch me play, no, come out and watch the Wizards play, and it will be a phenomenal game, we're trying to do everything we can... We're trying to do everything we can to promote it from Facebook and we want all of you that are, that are watching, those of you that are here in this massive audience that we have with each and every one of these seats that are filled tonight, we want you to be able to-
It's like church.
Well, I don't know, my congregation's a little bit bigger than this, but, but we want you to push it and promote it. Many of the teachers, many of the new administrators are going to participate in the game, some of the kids are going to participate, some of the students are going to participate in the game and so we're going to push it and, and try to do everything we can to raise as much money for the PTO, for the, for the, for the all-night, all-night graduation party. So, thank you, I think that's about it. I'll say one last thing, one last thing, again, again, you know, whatever we can do to push, and we just had the sheriff's department here, but whatever we can do to push to try to help those that are in need, so much is going on around us, so much tragedy, so much struggle, so much problems and situations that are going on, but it's good to maintain our calm, to maintain our peace and understand that adversity actually brings out the best in people. And so this, there's a lot of adversity, maybe not everybody, but adversity happens, I find out, happens to bring out the best in people and so with this adversity, let's show the best that we have and the best that we are and help individuals. Greater love have, have, than this, than no man have than this, that he lay down his life for a friend and so let's lay down our, lay down what we have to help somebody else. Thank you.
It's always difficult to follow Bishop Williams, but we're going to give it the best we can here. I think Kevin mentioned something I want to key on, the infinite parent portal, that's very important, provides a nice snapshot of what students are doing in school, the tests, grades, assignments and so on. And, you know, the parent portal team at all the open houses, they were there, I want to give them a shout out because so far we've registered approximately, we're pushing 2,000 families have been registered for the parent portal. So, Jellian Crawford, Julianne Depew, Liling Kovet Ermatos and Victoria Esturich, thank you for being there, they were there and they will be there at various events. And Nikki Lea, I wanted to inform everyone that if you go to, if you're not registered and you stop in the buildings, you're dropping your child off at a building, you can register at the building as well as special events. The, a couple of other quickly, things quickly, I saw a program which was kind of neat at Mont Hagan Middle School, Hudson Valley Pause for a Cause. We had the Doreen Scott and Emily Soper in the last meeting, so I went to see the program. And what happens is volunteers bring registered therapy dogs into the building to help reluctant students who might be a little reluctant to read to a group, they actually organize and they sit down and they read to the, the dogs. And if you, if you sat back and looked at the reaction to the students, they, they really related to that program. So, again, thank you to Emily Soper and Doreen Scott for the organization. Also at, going on, at Maple Hill, there was the, on, when was it, on Tuesday, October 3rd, there was the Nutrition Rally for Good Eating and our administrative team, central administrative team, Dr. Eastwood, Mr. Tuttle and Mr. Delmore were there. It featured, one of the features was a former jet player, Eric Coleman, who spoke to the students and again, they really, really related to him and he handed out jet hats and members of the National Dairy Council talked about good eating habits and, you know, this breakfast and lunch program is off to a fine start. It's not only the directors and they're doing a great job, Debbie Dunleavy and Lauren Burr, but all the staff members are cooperating, all the custodial staff, the administrative staff, the paraprofessional, the secretarial staff, we, you know, we just have great people in all of these positions. And one of the items at the food rally, Dr. Eastwood has called up to speak and he ran up there like a broken field runner in football, went straight, went to the left and went to the right. I thought maybe he'd be offered a contract right there for the Jets. So, but you got to stay here, oh, all right, the Jets. Anything else? Okay, why don't we move on? Now we'll go back, opportunity to address the board. Any takers? Once, twice, three, gone? Okay, we'll concentrate a second. Any letters, Mrs. Clark? No letters this evening? Okay, we're done with that. We approved the personnel. Any introductions of personnel this evening?
Not this evening. We do have a appointment, or you gave an appointment to appoint five English teachers for the high school, but he was unable to make it this evening and he'll be here at the next one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delmore. Superintendent's report, Dr. Eastwood.
I was going to talk about the visitation and the dedication on Monday, but I think that that's been covered pretty well. I, I do know that virtually all of our visitors were extremely impressed with both the level of technology, but most importantly, how that technology was being integrated into the instruction program. And that really showed because at the end of our presentations and discussions, each of the elected officials, the congressman, the assemblywoman, commissioner, chancellor, regent and senior deputy commissioner spent at least an hour engaged with our students in one of our new collaborative learning environments, which they actually enjoyed tremendously, that kind of conversation with our kids to, to see and listen to them talk about what they have inside the school district and that building. So, I personally want to thank each of those officials that came, they spent quite a bit of time here in, in the high school and with our kids and staff members. So, thank you to all of those individuals. And thank you to the community because they supported the project that, for a better term, put the high school and our school district that much further ahead technologically and instructionally with the new designs and instructional models that will be implemented, are being implemented, so.
Thank you, Dr. Eastwood. Anything else? Let's go on to the action items now. And I'd like a motion to amend the action items to add the creation of the position of Director of Special Education effective November 1st, 2017. This was discussed, may I have a motion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, passes unanimously. And we will add that where, let's see?
Item D.
Item D. H.
Item H.
Okay, item H.
That's my senior moment. Yeah. No, you weren't that far off.
Okay, let's go, the action items, let's start with the approval of Financial Memorandum Number Nine as presented.
So moved.
And we've had these for the, at least the week on our board docs. We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approval of Special Service Memorandum Number Seven? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of Change Orders, which was reviewed by the Change Order Committee and was presented on board docs? Any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Proposal for Professional Services with Adelaide Environmental Health Associates. Motion to approve the proposal for Professional Services with Adelaide Environmental Health Associates as presented?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Question.
Go ahead.
I know one of the contracts, all the professional services being approved involves the Highlight Launchpad Platform for Students, just a little bit, what does that entail?
Would you like to answer that, Mr. Scott?
The, I think, when I was reviewing it earlier today, it came across in just interest and curiosity as a board member, of course, the Highlight Launchpad Platform for Students, I know this is part of the blended learning initiative, how does it work, what, what does that entail, that particular item?
The software. Blended learning, that would be.
It's digital content education. It's education.
Yeah. So, so the question here basically is an extension of the contract that we have with digital, it's not-
Educational.
Educational elements regarding software that manages those, that program for a better term and-
I call my attention. Thank you.
Tom, do you want to talk about, we have, I missed, Proposal for Professional Services with Girard Associates Consulting Engineers. Can I have a, Mrs. Knapp, second on that?
Yeah. Second.
Yeah, I got it, second.
Okay, we got it? Any discussion, this is, this is Girard Engineering. Tom, you want to just briefly about, about both of those?
Yeah, certainly. The Proposal for the Professional Services with Girard Associates is to evaluate the mechanical electrical systems at the Truman Moon Building. We're finding more and more issues as that building ages, so this is to identify heating, cooling, air conditioning, electrical services, what needs to be replaced in the future and a budget along with recommendations of what to do with those systems. That's the first action item, or actually that is D and E is Professional Services with Adelaide Environmental Health Associates. This is for Project Monitoring Investigation Testing for Asbestos Work at William Carter. That will be for the summer of '18 work. So what we're doing is just testing and verifying and investigating where we might have to deal with asbestos, if at all, in that building as we move into that, get ready for that project.
Any questions on that? Okay, thank you. So now we, we can take a vote on both of those, I believe.
We've already passed D.
Okay. Okay, E? Did we get a first and second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Scott, for that discussion. Next is approval of the Memorandum of Agreement between the City School District and Middletown Teachers Association to extend the next generation digital content stipends between beyond '16, '17. Have a motion on that?
Let me explain both.
Go ahead.
F and G are MOAs. When we initially agreed to the new contracts, these two items should have been included or were included in the negotiations and approvals. What happened was they were inadvertently left out of the actual document. So we, we approved them and, and in totality as part of the package about a year or so ago when we negotiated the contract, unfortunately, what happened was the language did not change. So this MOA, these two MOAs are basically stating, we agree to what we already agreed to, but now we're going to put it in writing where it should have been, okay? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Any questions on F or G? May I have a motion to approve the agreement between the Middletown School District and the Middletown Teachers Association?
So moved.
Second, okay. Did we vote on that? No.
We didn't find-
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion passes unanimously. Number G. See, motion, Middletown, between the City School District to resolve the department head pay omission. Motion to approve the Memorandum of Agreement between ECDSM and Middletown Teachers Association to resolve department head pay omissions as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Now I think we amended the agenda to create the position of Director of Special Education effective November 1st, 2017.
So moved.
Mrs. Knapp? Bishop Williams? Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
We also need to do H and I.
Aye.
Let me, let me just discuss those two items so everybody that may be watching understands that. Tom, you want to come up to the microphone and give us a little bit more detail, but we've had issues, serious concerns about the condition of the HVAC and other aspects of the pools at the high school and I'm going to have Tom discuss those, so the next two resolutions basically deal with, with H and I deal with those issues.
Okay, good evening. What Dr. Eastwood is referring to is some of the systems in the swimming pool, the large HVAC unit which humidifies and treats the air within the swimming pool and we've recognized that that is failing. It's about 15, 16 years old and it's beyond its useful life, it would not pay to repair that. So that is one of the items we're recommending. The other is the boiler which heats the swimming pool. We do use a cogeneration plant to do some of the heating of that water, but we also need to replace the boiler. Additionally, tile work around the pool has been failing and we are also recommending replacement of the tile within the swimming pool well itself, associated drains and others, ladders and the diving board platforms. Would all be included in that.
So, basically what this resolution does is provide the school district with the opportunity to move forward with those emergency aspects as well as other building or pool-related needs that would be part of this program, correct? Tom?
Yes.
Any questions on that? Mrs. Knapp?
I got here a little late today, but I was under the impression, I thought we were going to come back with figures first. going to come back with figures first before we approved this. Did I misunderstand? We did come back with figures? No, he's kind of looking.
Well, what we're asking for this evening is the approval of emergency authorization. We will refine the project. We will come back with much more finite numbers as we move forward, but this is sort of, this is the initial authorization to start that work.
This is basically a green light to move forward.
Yes.
Any other questions on that?
Not a question, but as I understood it, President Brino and Dr. Eastwood, this would be done without any cost to the taxpayers, correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to get that out, that it's going to be undertaken and-
It would be done through use of fund balance.
And two, two more questions. If you could answer about how many students per year or people, individuals use the swimming pool?
I don't know that number, but thousands of people.
And in addition to serving our students, does the swimming pool also serve other community activities?
Yes, it does. Serves local swim groups, including one from the YMCA.
So it's fair to say it's a, it's a very important endeavor for the good of our school.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez, for bringing that up. Any other questions? Okay, now I need a motion to approve the sequel resolution for pool work as presented.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, I just want to make, I want to make note, just make a quick note, Dr. Eastwood said H, but I said H we just used to approve.
Yeah, so this is-
This is actually I and J.
I and J. I and J. Yep, thank you, Bishop Williams. So we have a motion to approve that?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Blumenau, and who else?
I, I made the motion, so.
Okay, you made the motion. Who's second?
Well, I think we, I think we made the discussion.
Okay. Okay. Recovered. This is-
I.
Okay. So all in favor of this?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, you're going to abstain, okay. So we have one abstention. For I. Okay. Now, number J. Resolution to approve emergency work at the high school swimming pool and corresponding, and corresponding budgetary appropriations. No, that was I, this is J. There's two different. That was a sequo, that was a sequo. This is now J.
What they did is they inserted-
So I made the statement, I'm not abstaining on the sequence. Well, it's-
You can correct your error of vote. Would you like to correct that? No, okay. So let's go on with J. Resolution to approve emergency work at high school swimming pool and corresponding, corresponding budgetary appropriations.
So moved.
Any, any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a question?
I have discussion. This is the one where I was perplexed on, so I'm, I made a mistake on the sequel one. I apologize. This one I'm perplexed a little bit on, and I'm thinking of something maybe that, some other way, something could be done. So I'm just going to abstain on this.
Okay, so let's, I think we took a vote on this, or we-
We didn't vote on this yet, did we?
Well, we sort of were when you asked the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mrs. Knapp? Okay, fine. Number 11. Resolution to approve the sale of district property and authorize a vote, and this concerns Memorial, Memorial School. Would you like to say a few words about that, Dr. Eastwood?
Absolutely. As folks know, this building's been around vacant for a number of years now, and the Board of Education has thought that on a number of occasions that we had a sale, which fell through. This news cycle has very serious bids that have been submitted to the Board of Education, one of which the board chose a couple of weeks ago to move forward with, and this resolution now allows us to go to the voters, which we're required to do in order to sell that building. Mr. Tuttle, would you like to go over the finances of that sale?
Sure. Historically, I think it was 2008, we actually had a bond or a proposition out there for the sale of the school. That sale went through, so there was no sale of the building at that time. At this point, the sale of the school is up for $188,000, which will be voted on on December 5th, so we need the public to come out and vote and support that proposition so we can move the building off of our rolls. Right now, currently, we spend about $40,000 a year just to ensure the building, the vacant building, so we need to really remove it from our rolls.
Thank you. So any other discussion from the administrative staff on this? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Second? Okay. Any further discussion on this or questions?
I just want to add that saving the school district $40,000, I think it's worth it, and at the same time, turning over the building to a buyer who'll bring it back to proper use will be something great for the community, so I'm going to go in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Mr. Crescendo?
Anytime we receive revenue like that, it goes into fund balance, so we'll be able to use it next year for whatever we need to do to offset any taxes.
Remember, the proposed vote is December 5th of this year, Tuesday, December 5th. Any other questions from board members? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Right, let's get out to vote, and we'll get it sold, hopefully. And just one comment, you know, I've been hearing for years that that building is an attract, quote, "an attractive nuisance" for individuals who may not have a legitimate purpose of being around there. And I, I think a sale of this to a responsible party who's going, would embellish the neighborhood. Mr. Gomez, who lives near there, shaking his head.
Yes, it's in the second ward, two blocks from my house, and in the past, you know, individuals who could be a danger to public safety will gather in the area in front of it. I know the city locked the building in front, the old apartment building, but it would be nice to see that school building back and serving the public interest and saving our school district money. And I think this is a positive step in the right direction. It's, we owe it to our taxpayers, we owe it to our children, and we owe it to our community, and I commend the, the board as the member to taking the step in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. That's from a neighbor of the Memorial School. Second opportunity to address the board, any takers in the audience? Seeing none, let's go on. We have two major committee reports this evening, and we'll start with Mr. Crescendo and his mail, his audit committee.
Do I do this vote, or do you do it, to approve the minutes of the-
No, you do that. Go ahead.
So I need a motion for the approval of the audit committee minutes of June 12, 2017. Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so, so the last audit committee we had, I'd like to read from these notes. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. The audit committee met on Thursday, September 28th. The external auditors presented the exit interview. The overall controls were very good, with no major issues noted. The major issues tested consisted of procurement and procedures, cash, cash, cash disbursements, cash receipts, and payroll procedures. Minor issues were discussed with appropriate personnel. The single audit over federal programs was very good. Other areas reviewed included school lunch fund, capital project fund, debt service fund, and reserve balances. The final audit report will be available for the board approval at the next meeting. And the next audit committee meeting is October 28th, at a time to be announced.
Thank you, Mr. Crescendo.
Thank you.
Now, we have two of our very well-respected and veteran school board members who are going to attend the school board conference next week, correct, John? Next week? And there are a number of resolutions connected with this. So, Mrs. Blumenau, you go ahead and tell us how you want to handle this.
Sorry. We've gone through the resolutions one at a time, where I've asked, either sent them out, had the district clerk send them out and have, you know, a tally sheet. There are 27 resolutions that will be brought to the floor during the voting portion of the meeting this next, next week, which, so we, what our responsibility, and these are, I'll just give a brief description of what they, what we're voting on today, or what we're talking about today. These resolutions will be recommended to New York State School Boards Association, who will then take the resolutions, which basically are the wishes of the boards of education throughout New York State, to bring these issues to our lobby, our lobby representatives to lobby the state in order to get things that make sense to school board members. So that's in a very lay description, that's how it works. What our job is, is to just give me direction as far as how we want to vote on certain things. So if everyone had an opportunity to, to take a look at the, the 27 proposed resolutions, I myself went through them pretty carefully and did not see anything that caused me any concern. However, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just the voting delegate, so I want to just make sure that if there is anything that our board is very seriously opposed to, needs clarification on, so that I can go and do my job.
Just a question or comment. I, I also went through these, and I didn't see anything that raised these, quote, "the red flags." And, you know, with yourself and Bishop Williams attending the conference, I'd like to suggest we entrust the voting to you, and during the week, if anyone, to you and John, and during the week, if there's any questions, serious questions on these, then the person can contact you either by email or telephone and express an, an opinion on this. But I have, myself, I fully, I fully trust in your judgment and Bishop Williams' judgment.
I, I think it's important to note, I kind of went through, went through these pretty thoroughly. There's just two main ones that caught my attention, and they're really not issues because, because none of the issues is the, is the resolution, the resolution, well, one main one really, the resolution for the Black Caucus of School Board Members to be given a vote on the NISBA, on the NISBA board. That one had been put before, and it had a lot of support last year. Just barely didn't make it, but there's a lot more support that's coming in this year toward that resolution. But outside of that, I think it's important to note, if you go through, you go through your guide, that this is the first time in, in the, in the four years that I've been going to NISBA, I didn't go last year, but this is the first time in the four years going to NISBA, that I have not seen any rebuttals on any of the resolutions. And so what you're going to see is the proposal, and I'm not saying that there's not, there's not rebuttals, but most of the time, when we, when you look at these guides, there's a rebuttal that comes back toward it as to why. So there's a number of resolutions that are presented, and then you'll see at the end, I think there's six resolutions at the end, that they're not recommending-
Right.
-to be passed. So, and, and if you have any questions, Paula, Paula, Paula is, is a veteran, a veteran at this now, so, and, so, nothing here, nothing here is, is really drawing a monkey wrench into anything that I, that I can foresee.
Thank you. Mrs. Knapp, do you have a question? Okay.
I think that Paula and Pastor- Anything that was really significant that we should, would want to discuss more. I don't know about everybody else.
Okay, so then we'll, and-
These are not public, are these public?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Blumenau?
Nothing.
Okay. So then, we will entrust the voting on resolutions to Mrs. Paula Blumenau and Bishop John Williams. Any objections to this? Okay, so that's, that's what we'll do.
Right. So we have a big delegation going up to New York State School Boards this year, which is very exciting for me, because I think this is like my fifth, I think this is my fifth.
Yeah.
I think I, I didn't go the first, I think I went my first year.
This is, this is your fifth. This is my fourth, and I didn't go last year.
All right. So I've gone to five in a row, and every year ago, and I sit there, and not, and there's really great information that's offered, but I come back saying, like, we, we should be sharing what we're doing, we really should be sharing what we're doing, and in this forum. And so this year we are. So I'm very excited to be able to go up again, and this time, we're presenting.
And thank you.
And we have a strong-
Because I'm more excited about what we're doing than anyone else is.
We have a very strong contingency going up, both two presentations, and one in dual language and one on-
Under the country and two-year.
Two-year. In addition to that, we do have a table in the exhibit hall, where we're going to be displaying and having conversations regarding the programs that we have here in Middletown. We also have a brand-new program book that we will be presenting at that to discuss all the programs we have. And finally, one of the things that our staff, our teaching staff and literacy staff have, administration have put together is a revision to their previous literacy manual. That will be done, and we'll be giving some of those out to folks that come up and have a conversation and discussion with us as well. So we're-
It's great.
We'll have a strong showing this year.
I have to say that as far as literacy, because that's what really excites me, that's what really excited me, I think, so many years ago, when, when you first came on board, it was one of- it was one of the first things that started to change, when we started seeing a literacy program, a literacy class, that our kids started attending and participating in. And that's where I saw, as a parent, a huge change in the way my son was learning. And before that, he struggled. And as soon as that literacy program started, it was like night and death in his ELI, and that's what I think that, for him, I'd just like to comment to when my kids had success and what it was, you know, over the course of the years, and all the little, you know, the little successes that built up to the big success, that I saw, I saw such a huge difference, that he graduated so strong in humanities program, very rich in everything, but really with a, an emphasis with the humanities, and then went on to college and ended up wanting to do other things, but his strength was in the humanities, and he felt that, and he felt that comfort, and he went that direction. So, you know, it's, it's nice to see the progression, and I'm so glad we're sharing that.
And thank you both for taking your time to do this.
Okay, that's all I got.
See, now we'll move on to roundtable. Anything new and compelling for any members of the Board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that the Common Council on October seventeenth will be considering a resolution with respect to the pending legislation in Albany to raise penalties for passing school buses. I understand that the school board will be looking at that at the beginning of next year in time for the new legislative session, but I think it's good to also know that the Common Council's also taking steps. The legislation with, in Albany would increase the penalties for drivers that pass a school bus that's either having students bored or leave. And I think that's something important that all the parents, everybody in TV land or online, be aware of, because they, unfortunately, there are reckless drivers out there, especially in morning rush hours, who sometimes just don't care if children are getting off or getting in the bus. As a parent, I have witnessed that when my children have been getting on the buses, our cars, the drivers are just so anxious that they don't think of the repercussions. So the Middletown Common Council will be considering October seventeenth a resolution, and I think that's good, and I understand that the school board will be looking at that early next year, and hopefully the legislature, or with the governor, will move in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Mrs. Tobias, did you have anything?
No, I do not. Thank you for asking, though, Mr. Farina.
Anyone have anything to be discussed? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mrs. Tobias? Did you get that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and the next meeting will be October nineteenth. Thursday, October nineteenth. Thank you.